Now it's going.
You got the touch, soft touch.
Sorry, well, the public finances meeting is so fascinating, yes. Generally, the board makes a decision today they can table if they want to. Oh, Alan, I'm so glad that you're here.
I apologize, Marlon Lake.
So, we're ready to have the case called.
We're called.
Carmella, can you please present to us VAR 2016-01?
Sure, sure. I'm gonna make this plain as... Alright, our only case today is case VAR 2016-01. A request by Point Church of Malasa. Point Church of Malasa is requesting a variance to our buffering requirements. As you see in the table, whenever you have a commercial use or institutional use, I should say, that it's next door to a residential rezoned property, you have to provide for a buffer. And in this case, the property to the north is on the R1, which is Low Dency Residential, and they have to provide for a 20-foot vegetative buffer. Within that 20-foot vegetative buffer, they have to plant so many trees, so many shrubs, specific, four trees, 25 shrubs, every 108. And I believe I broke that down and started off with what they are required to be slant. In this case, they are requesting a variance to plant just the shrubs and not the trees for various reasons. One reason is that along their north lot line is a 50-foot easement. They feel that if they plant trees, it's just gonna be a problem in the long run. The EMC company requires to cut them, keep them trimmed, et cetera. The applicants are here, staff look at this, and recommend approval. We feel that planting shrubbery alone is enough to provide for a sufficient buffer. You would have that line of shrubs, and you could have another 30-plus feet of just, you know, open property, open land, and with that, we are recommending approval.
Okay, any questions, any discussions?
I have one question. Why not... Why not come in with a mix of the shrubs and the trees and just less than, or either less than the amount, or decide on a different type of tree?
Well, the buffer requires straight shady trees, which you're under campy, you're old to bigger trees, not your crepe murder old ones, you know? So, I mean, the board can recommend, you know, them to mix that, you know, the smaller trees, maybe replace some of the shrubs with some of the smaller trees. Their goal is to try to get the plantings as close to that curve as possible. So, you want to avoid putting something where the roots will, you know, mirror the paving. I believe they have paving planted for that area. But the engineer's here, the landscape architect is here to answer the questions. But yeah, that's an option.
Explain, please, the yellow border versus the broken border that is outside the yellow border.
Thanks. I may.
My question is, or where I'm going with this, is I'm concerned that, I guess, they're gonna have to put everything they plant inside the yellow and on the top side, in this case, where you're looking at, the top side of the parking lot.
Right, that's their goal.
And the buffer, you know, the dashed or broken line area, that's too big to be a 50-foot buffer, I mean, 50-foot right away, or east, not right east, but...
50 is large, but it's been in place for years.
No, but the reason I'm asking is, they're parking on the easement there.
Right.
Okay, that's where I'm going with this, is they're actually parking on the easement under the edge of the power.
Yes, sir. The county engineer has requested that they get clearance from EMC, although we know it's one of these pavements, but we want some type of assurance from EMC that that is okay, and is okay. But they... This yellow area represents that 50-foot easement.
Right, that's what I was asking, that's the 50-foot easement, yellow part, not the dashed dark line that's outside.
That's correct.
What is the dark line?
That's just an area we just wanted to focus on.
It's a graphic way to emphasize the area we're talking about, but it's just a graphic, it doesn't represent anything.
Okay, that was my point. The bottom to the top is the property.
How far is it from the top, the yellow lines at the top, to the property at the top? Where's the edge of the property, or here, that top line? That yellow line is the top of the property?
Yes.
So, they've got, based on that rendering, probably six, seven, eight feet of actual dirt on the other side of the curve where the parking stops.
Actually, from this area to the property line, I estimate roughly 30 feet.
Can I speak?
Hold on, hold on.
Roughly 30 feet. So, if they were to plant right on top of that, the edge of that curve, then they're gonna still have 30 feet of just open land and won't, a lot, right up to the property line. My concern is the cars, the headlights shining on the property, but we don't know if they're gonna build that, that property to a more hit me than you know, some thick eggs for now. There are no need to fight this.
Okay, I don't have any more questions, anybody else? Okay, is there anyone here in support of this application, or anybody would like to give us any additional information? Please come to the lecture and give us your name and address for the record, and tell us what you wish to have taken under consideration.
My name is Bruce Smith, I live at 2941 Bot Hall Road, and I'm a studio eight designer, we're building the church with this project. And a couple of things I'd like to point out, that area is a very low point inside. There's a lot of drainage that naturally has occurred in that area. And so, we're limited as to the plant material that we survive in there. We're also limited as to how much we can grade it so that it will drain well, because then we'd be grading off to other people's property, which is prohibited by zoning requirements. So, we're kind of stuck with the buffer requirement that requires a planting, but it's a very low area, and we're limited as to what we can do to get it to drain well because of the impact on adjacent properties. So, we started looking at... And then the third limitation is the fact that it's an overhead utilities, and so large canopy trees, they would be having to cut those down at some point when they started getting into the power lines. And most trees that we looked at, the species, would not do well for a wet environment, would be tall enough that they would become a problem for the utility company at some point. So, we tried to think about getting some type of visual buffer there, but in a more reasonable way, that we don't want to go out and plant a bunch of trees that are gonna be choked to death due to excess moisture, and that. So, we won't plant shrubs that you can get some type of shrub species that would be a little bit more, I guess, hardy in a wet environment. Again, we want to be good neighbors, and we want to provide a buffer to the neighbors to the north, but we don't want to go out and spend a lot of money on plant material that's gonna die because of either wet materials that are gonna be cut down because of utility requirements. So, we've kind of got a limit down low, and we've got a limit up high as to what plant material we would be able to put there, and it would be suitable to survive. It's not a question of adding irrigation, that's not a problem, it's too much air to connect.
Okay.
So, that's kind of the rock in the hard place that we're in.
Anything else you'd like to put out?
I can't think of anything.
But if there were any questions, I'd be one member of the faculty. Any questions, any discussion?
I've got a question. Have y'all done any research as to the possibility of types of plants in there?
Yes, Laura Gale with our office, who is our landscape designer, has looked at a lot of different plant materials. She's had a meeting with Carmella and talked about some plant materials that would be suitable for such a potential.
So, she's gonna speak to...
If you guys would have a specific question about plant material, I would like her to help us, she would do a better job than I would.
I agree. I have a question, I mean, I'm not sure you'll be the one to answer.
Well, I'll try, and we're going to...
But the actual 50-foot easement, does it go to the back of the parking lot as well, or to the top of the parking lot as well?
It's gonna come about 20 feet into the parking lot. Parking space is about 20 feet deep, and you can see that it comes to the edge of that top row of parking. So, it's coming into the parking area, we're parking about 20 feet into that easement. Now, our company, the initial discussions are, they don't have objections to that, and we'll get the documentation from them if they don't oppose. And then we've got about 30 feet beyond the parking lot that would serve as our buffer area. The only problem is, that is a very low wet area. It holds a lot of water, doesn't drain even dry.
Any other questions, discussions at this time?
I'll let Laura make talk a little bit about...
Come to the lecture.
Hi, my name is Lario. Interesting record, I'm not really a workaholic, I'm a landscape designer. Some of the requirements for the site, I've done a lot of commercial properties here in Malasa over the past 10 years, and in this buffer, it is a wet area. I've found out there numerous occasions after the rain and before the rain, and taking photos of standing water in the situation. A lot of the plant species that I would propose for this area do well, they're feet wet, this kind of the term I have more culture, but they also grow to be about 100 feet tall in certain areas. The wax myrtle is one that I would specify to put in, and it's gonna get a little taller, but also I was thinking about the dwarf yelpaholly to get the shrub count in. The only thing that bothers me is that there isn't any existing canopy there right now, so anything that we do put in, even if it does, like it's feet wet, is probably gonna get really burnt up in the sun with the exposure to the sunlight out there. The only thing that I was proposing is possibly use the buffer count and put it somewhere else on the site, and potentially be able to figure out what to do with that in the future. But as far as planting in that buffer with the standing water, I just feel like it'll be, you know, throwing money away. I mean, of course, they can buy it and plant it, the maintenance on it, just keeping that area drained is just a main concern for the water culture species. Can I answer the questions?
Any other questions, comments?
Well, I have a comment here.
Was your question answered?
Okay, well, those plants I would have suggested would be the yelpaholly and the wax myrtle, and you can keep them from getting 100 feet tall, it's possible, any plant that you put out there, if you put crepe murder out there, it's still gonna get beaming down the sun on it, so best to choose a native plant that's appropriately adjusted to our environment.
And the native plant species that I would suggest are the feather brush. The thing is, is that getting those to the church, they're gonna be doing a lot of their landscaping within their community, so they're gonna donate the plant material, put it in themselves, irrigate it themselves. I'm just worried about the availability of those plants to be able to get them to install, but I'd be happy to help the church.
They're certainly available through a variety of nurseries in the area, so...
I have two concerns. One is the discussion that has been how wet it is out there, and the possible survival rate or not of anything that's been there versus the canopies that are there. Is it not better to dig a drainage or holding pond to run the water off so that it is not standing water?
The engineer has proposed pond to the top right part of the parcel, it's just not in these drawings.
So, do we think that would that not eliminate the wet?
I think that that would be a question for the civil engineer, he's actually in the audience right now, or in the meeting right now. I think that it had to do, I think that you should probably answer that question.
Any other questions, discussions?
I would like to speak, whatever.
Okay, please come to the lecture and give us your name and address for the record.
I can't get her answer, I'm gonna think of last name.
And it's Laura Gale, my address is 4154 Telford Creek Drive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Larry Sanders, I'm a civil engineer and a property engineering, my address is 64921, that is county. And I just wanted to add to some of the discussions that's been made so far. I intentionally left that rear area at the position rate, as close to the position rate as possible. Water ponds in that whole area down on the property to the north, and builds up against that area, has to build to a certain elevation before it starts to flood to the east, you know, a small ditch that runs parallel with the, or it's within the utility easement. And as far as designing goes, you're not really supposed to impound water on anybody, you know, you have to account for the tension of what comes into your site, and to the greatest extent possible, let it be what naturally runs. If there wasn't a pounding problem there, I could have built that whole area up. I spoke to EMC, asked them what they would allow in that easement, and they said basically we do what we want to as long as we weren't building structures or anything that would possibly get whoever colonized. But prior to becoming an professional engineer, I worked for years in construction, I was a range of some construction, and almost without exception, when you build up right to the property line, you're gonna have a stench of litigation when you make that problem. In this situation, there was already water pounding, so it's just, it's definitely not a situation where you're gonna do anything where it appears, even if you can justify it where it appears, you cause pounding problem. So, that's the reason I left that alone. I am taking a little bit into the pond, but grading will only allow me to do so much. And to talk about your question about the ditch, that is extremely flat there, to move water in a ditch without it starting pounding in the ditch and creating wetlands has to be about 1%, and there was just no way to get 1% to get it out there in any other way. The pavement is actually, it's into the utility easement a little bit, but the actual buffer line is, the actual buffer line pavement is not in the buffer line. That was something this was all, I sent Carmella early on, and then we discovered that we had, we were dealing with 23rd buffer, as opposed to 33rd buffer. Okay, one more thing I want to mention, you guys can ask whatever you want. The idea of fence in that type of area, we'd be doing the same thing, it ponds on a regular basis, but soils are fairly fertile soils, so it doesn't fall for extended period of time, but I would channel it or wood fence, with, I would rush the rock in a short amount of time, it would be a continual maintenance issue and continual cost, you know, probably 20, 15 to 20,000 dollars every time you have to replace that, so it's that. And on top of that, the utility line itself runs probably five foot north from where I'm sure the curve is at, so there's gonna be trucks in and out there, turning around, working, and they have to, when they have to find a thing to learn, so it's not a, it's not an ideal situation, everybody's trying to get out of here, and we're just trying to do something that makes sense.
All right, any other questions, any other discussions?
So, there is or is not a holding pond in the right corner?
No, ma'am, there is a ancient pond. Can I walk through there?
Yes.
There's a, we designed a basically an acre and a half, potential pond here, that would be a wet pond as well. So, I was able to get that to drain, and everything's controlled by grades, you know, in theory, you can dig up as deep as you want to. The depth that you go to is what controls it, and my water elevation, my dirt grade above elevation of holding, of other, top of water elevation, is what controls how far I can grade back this way to get the water around there. If it was, you know, about, if it was 10 foot deep, I could have, you know, run a ditch all the way around, but it wasn't. So, I graded back, you know, as much of that area into the pond as possible.
Anything else? Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else who would like to give us any additional information?
Get out there, let me check, snap, 1321 West Del Avenue, I'm a property construction with contractor. Don't want to be redundant here, but just want to reiterate what Mr. Sanders said, with this 50-foot easement, early on in the design phases, Mr. Sanders is a member of the church, he wasn't selected for that, but you know, we've got a challenging site there. And the church has actually increased the buffer from 20 to 30 feet, so over 50% in distance there, acknowledging we have some soil conditions problems, flat, low lining areas of water, so we kind of looked at it as give and take, you know, agreeing with church, you know, to do some shrubs, and want to be a good neighbor to everyone, and I just wanted to make that statement, they did, you know, best 10 feet to 800 feet of their property to increase the buffer by 50%. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions, discussions, for sure.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you.
Any other questions, any other discussions on the prostitute side?
I have a question for Carmella. Do we, does the county have a maximum impervious surface requirement? They have to leave a certain amount unpaved?
Yes, you do.
And how does this design drawn compare? Are they like right at the limit, are they at their maximum?
They are under the maximum requirement because of that big...
Because of the pond?
Right.
Okay, and the pond is meeting the requirement that they have to keep all of their water on site?
Yes.
And that pond will be fenced because we don't want church members falling?
I don't know the fencing requirement for ponds, there's a...
As long as you maintain four to one slopes to the, into the pond, your fence is not required.
Okay.
If I can add to that also, we have one of the church staff members here also. The church envisioned, this, like Larry said, is gonna be a wet pond, it's not gonna be all an ass pond, it's gonna maintain four feet of water, three to four feet of water. They plan for a water feature there, they plan for a dock, they plan to use it as a ministry tool for their youth department and kids and everybody, I mean, they envision benches and gazebos and, you know, is that a walking trail? I mean, so, they're gonna, it's not gonna be one of these old, sometimes we don't have very pretty detention areas, so...
Okay, any other discussions, any other questions?
I'm just, I'm concerned about the area that we're talking about, that it being wet, that the members donating and maintaining, and I understand that is very difficult for a church, and money is always an issue, but having, with the plan that's in place right now, it doesn't seem that the plants would be maintained. They're likely to die because they're not going to be either what will be water healthy or even being water healthy, if it, if we have a rainy season, it's gonna be gone. One of the things that they stated in here was money as an issue. That's gonna have to be a continual replacement. If there's no canopy, like Laura was saying, things are gonna burn up as far as shrubs are concerned. I don't know if it's not better to, and please forgive me, I'm absolutely not an engineer, I'm not a landscape designer, but to run a pipe, maybe bury a pipe underneath this back area that goes into the detention pond, and run the water off so that you can plant some trees, and maybe get back the 10 feet that you've requested, but, or that y'all have been willing to give up, but current situation with the plants, I just don't think that it will be maintained. I think that it'll be planted, and then it will go by wayside because they're not gonna know what to do. It's gonna always be standing water.
Okay, based on that, what is in code enforcement, I know in this, I think it's in the city, that when they do plantings, they have to be there, they have to survive for one year, and after one year, I don't know if there's any teeth in the, what's in the county?
In the county's requirement, it has to be healthy and thriving.
From now on?
Yes.
And it would become complaint driven if there was a problem? It's not up to code enforcement to go out there and check it, but if somebody says something, the code enforcement will go out and look at it.
Yes, this is a question.
I have another question. Okay, my question, I think Mr. Sanders would be, hearing what she was describing, is what we've got in our yard, French drains, I think that's what they call them, why isn't this a feasible alternative?
Well, I guess in my mind, the biggest thing is, if I drive that area to try and do something like that, which, I know that's not, that's not a legitimate deal for a variance, but the pipe would be extremely expensive, but that's not the reason that we don't have that, a French drain is extremely expensive. If you drive that area, it's still a utility easement that is going to be trafficked on, and they'll have the legal right to traffic on it however they want to. So, you still have a limited amount of space there, you know, somewhere around 30 foot to get power trucks in and out of there, and they, you know, they have to turn in weird angles and stuff like that to get on the outside of the power pole with bucket trucks, so it's...
I thought the easement was on the pavement.
No, the easement goes beyond the pavement 30 feet, it's 20 feet into the... But to address that question, historically, there has been a drainage ditch along the back of that property that has taken water from properties uphill, taken that water across this property down to properties beyond this property. What you're asking us to do is divert that water onto our site and handle all that water, and I think that is putting hardship on the church that I don't think the code allows us to do. I mean, we would have to handle a tremendous amount of water to get it off there, because there's a tremendous amount of water that traverses all the way across the back of that property coming from properties uphill from us, and I think that that would, we would have to absorb a tremendous amount of more water to keep it dry enough to make it a viable landscaping buffer without being sensitive to the type of materials we put there.
Ms. Sanders, you have a question?
I have a statement for the board. Utility easements are an unpleasant fact of life, and when someone has a utility easement on their property, they can't grow trees, they can't grow crops, they can't grow stuff, they can't put buildings, they can't, there's a lot of things that you can't do on your property when you own it, when it has utility easement on it. This property has a 50-foot utility easement on it, which apparently they're gonna try to pave into, which I think the utility is being very kind about that, but in most cases, you're not allowed to do that. So, that would mean, if they actually didn't have that permission, that they would not be able to have that first row of parking. And looking on there, they could, instead of having two rows of parking which face the same direction with some, something, they could have, turn the parking around and put that, what's gonna be their little islands, and have at the northern side of that, then a buffer area to do their tree planting, which is then going to be outside of the easement. So, the utility easement, whether it comes down the side of the road and you can't have your trees right up to it because the utility company comes along and they chop off all those branches, or whether you have pipeline that comes on your property and you can't do anything there, these are property come with these kinds of horrible things on them, and then you have to figure out how to work around them. So, a way to work around this would be to flip the parking, instead of having everybody park a two rows facing the same way, which is what looks like they're doing there, to have instead a parking row that goes the other way, get rid of that ancient parking row, and put the buffers, put the trees where that ancient parking is. So, you would have somewhat less parking, but you would be totally outside of that horrible stupid thing that's on your property, which is utility easement.
Well, that's, as far as design goes, we're noticeably under the impervious pervious requirement, and I mean, that would be detrimental to the church. The parking lot, the building, everything is...
Well, so in the bottom part, the parking couldn't go to the edge of the parking, way in the bottom right?
Those are two outparcings. See the main drive on either side are outparcings.
Connected to that.
No, no, connected to the parking lot, not by the outparcings, but connected to the parking lot on the bottom right hand side. Can that go farther along to the edge of the property?
Right here.
Right there.
That's where the pond drains and that's the spillway. That's where everything drains naturally. We're doing with.
So you can't bring that parking lot over to that edge?
Not all over the drain like we had it.
The pond is above that?
The pond is above that, but the pond is deep. This drain area, this is a spillway. Drains across that whole spillway and it comes down and gets marrow and marrow and you have to have ratings and anything.
Can you do that under the parking lot? And they do have another parking lot right out here, right? The water goes under the parking lot and it's held in something under the parking.
Well, you can do anything. If you spend enough money, but I don't know that, I feel sure we would want to relocate trees somewhere else that we would have to spend another $75,000 trying to move the parking around and redesign it.
Well, I'm just, you know, sort of, I'm sensitive to that whole, utility easements are a horrible thing to try to work around on your property. And it's, I'm really impressed that the power companies that you could be on it at all because they really don't like you on their property.
They did put online, just have to accept the fact that if they ever need to, that they might afford it.
Well, and that's, the shrubbery is going to be in that area. The shrubbery could get torn out by the utility.
That's why we're proposing homeless shrubbery. The shrubbery, there's field on the backside of this curb. I filled a little bit. So water would not go straight onto our parking lot. The shrubbery will survive fine up against the curb where we got a couple of field places. But in the utility easement, I mean, there's nothing we can do to guarantee it will truck stop.
And I apologize. I think that we might have a little bit of confusion here. Show me again, please, where the utility easement, bring your fingers up to the bottom there, where the utility easement is.
This is the utility easement.
And the yellow.
And this, which runs pretty much along this line, is the 20-foot, is the 30-foot buffer requirement. The 20-foot is actually right here. So that, the part that basically buffer is, if we move it to the front, I mean, this part would be non-trap.
So the entire 50 feet of utility easement is on church property. But only 20 feet of that 50 is being paved? The depth of the parking space.
It varies slightly, but that's pretty close.
And the buffer is going to have to go in the middle, based on what we're seeing right here of the utility easement?
Well, whatever, the power line runs more or less center, center along this line right here. So that's what I'm saying, probably not doing a very good job of is, mine change is the buffer is great measure from the rear property line in, which is 20-foot. But it's impractical to plant anything where the utility would have to trap without having to replace it. The stuff that is usable and can be planted is right up against the curb and go there. They won't traffic on it and we can leave the shrub count. And if the shady tree is an issue, I can't speak on behalf of the church. I'm sure the church is willing to try to figure out how to get it on site somewhere else. It's just a hint. We really don't have it approved, utility easement.
Yeah, there are.
Any other questions?
I've got a question. I want to make sure what that is. Y'all awaiting the tree requirement and approving the recommended approval for the shrub requirement today?
Correct.
And based on complaint in the future, it has to be maintained forever now? Okay, are we ready to make a motion?
Not yet. Any other questions, any other discussion? And we heard, are we going to hear from the positive side? Was there any contact to your office? I'm assuming you don't have a ghost out there to send objection. Was there any contact to your office in objection or any questions?
None.
Okay. Any other discussions before we try to entertain a motion?
I make a motion to approve the request for variance stipulating that they don't have to put the trees, but they do have to put the shrub requirement based on A, C, and D.
Yeah, motion over.
I would second that if you would add the phrase that they have to be made.
I have motion over the floor from Nancy. I have second from Mr. Altorato. All in favor, please raise a hand. All opposed, the count is 6-1. Good luck with it, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Ms.?
You are allowed, you are allowed to precast, you possibly, the minutes are not ready for approval.
Please be.
They will be ready in three seconds.
Yet exactly, we do not have minutes. I will dispense with asking for a vote to approve the minutes.
My apologies.
Apologies accepted. Any other, excuse, new business, old business?
I have a question. Sometime back at the city council, they approved the benches for the city. Are benches allowed in the county, but are they in violation of the ULC, the sign requirements?
We are silent when it comes to.
The benches?
Benches in the right way. We do have a prohibited sign section that talks about you can't put signs of trees, rocks.
If those benches are in the county, on private property, are they allowed?
On private property?
Yes.
If they're advertising a business?
No, they're advertising taxi drivers and churches and whatever, whoever advertising on the benches.
I'll have to look at it, see what it's.
Because I've seen them outside of the city.
I have a question. Why is the county silent on the benches, on the right corner? Because they're owned by a charitable group?
No, I can't say why they're silent. I have an admission in the county, to my knowledge, as a admission.
Any other business we need to tend to? I did see a little blurb that the city was going to do some kind of ID thing.
So more from what you saw from me, the police chief is willing to do that for city important things. So if you are interested, I've got my hand these little camera. Now take your picture. I swear I will not post my milk carves or visit for my shots or whatever, but we can give you some of these handy.
The county is still?
No, we're not ready.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, if there's nothing else to do, thank you very much for your time and patience and attention and we stand adjourned.
Thanks for coming.
For those of you who are interested, that is back to them.
Oh, yeah. They didn't know that.
Amen.
Hey, what's up? What's up? What's going on in the back?
These women. It's kind of a national story about two and a half.